Call the meeting to order at 7:30, 2:00 PM. Do the roll call. I show Julie Stoffer, Dustin Johnson, Suzanne Umball, Derek Jones, the town attorney, and Lisa Mulaney, some trade. What stand do you pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes for January 18th, 2017, regular session. Any additions or corrections?
I move to approve the minutes.
Got a motion, a second to approve the minutes for January 18th, 2017. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Citizens input. Yes?
I have a question about the community garden and what plan that we had in place. It's my understanding last year that one family kind of pretty much funded that and kind of built together. And there was a few people that kind of came along and maybe helped and stuff and thought maybe we could do some fundraisers and maybe have a better plan this year to make that bigger and better and not lump that on just maybe a couple people. And how we could, my thing is, I don't know, maybe May 1st if we're not going to go from seed. And so that's coming up.
Yeah, maybe we can advertise on the sign or something to have some kind of community meeting for the community garden or ideas.
Is your wife willing to pick that up again?
Sure she would. And it worked out pretty good last year. It looked really nice.
She did look nice. She did a great job.
I'll call my wife here.
We love that.
Well, maybe we can put something together and get more people involved.
Maybe you could do a media BNR building or something.
Yeah.
You know, or even here.
Anything else? Yes?
I just have a question about the cemetery since the town board has taken it over. Are you allowed to plant like perennial flowers next to a headstone or anything like that?
Not on the, I guess I'm wrong, not on the new burial sites.
No. What's new?
Not new. No, it's throughout. It's nothing, everything that you have has to be placed on the foundations. So there's no planting of flowers, there's no planting of bushes.
Okay.
You know, stuff like that.
That's what I needed to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Why say correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, I have a copy of the bylaws in the office if you want.
Yours. Wow, left that open. Anything else? Yes?
I don't know where this word bring it up or not, but the grant I came in and talked to you about in December, Brent Landis and I got a road down a verse, looked it over, made some adjustments to it, and we got, I got submitted Tuesday in time for the spring cycle, so we'll see what happens here. The total after the people came down from Point Matic and the people from AFC about the gas protectors totaled $14,103. It's what we applied for. Was the total for the grant, less than 10% from five from the council and five from the fire department. So the grant should be about $12,193.70 if I remember right. So sometime, hopefully, middle of April, we'll know. I guess when they said that they start work to grace is about first part of April, so.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? Moving on, whole business, attorney report.
I know that we've got Chuck DeWitt here, Marshall County Building Inspector, and I think that I had sent an email to ask him to come because the council member requested that you be here concerning the, an exterior inspection that he did at the Speedway gas station. So Chuck, I'm going to go ahead and let you talk, and then that way you can get out of here if you want. You're welcome to stay all night long if you want to.
You don't have that on the presentation. You have pictures there.
I have pictures, but yes, I don't have any slides or...
Maybe some people out here might want to see them. As I looked at the building, the northeast side of it has deterioration where the mortar is missing, falling away from the side of the building, water's penetrating. We get onto the east side where we have the electrical panel is rusted and rotted out, nothing there, and also you can see where there's more of that mortar missing and falling out. Here we actually have larger cracks across the back where this old door or window used to be coming apart. That's on the southeast corner. When you get to the south, it's taken more weather. The whole place from the window and everything is rotted. You can see cracks running down. I think there's structural damage here to the footers where the corner goes down. And when you get to the roof, a seam is broken out here allowing water to run inside from that area. And then also where the cooling unit is there, it's rotted underneath that and sun come down. There's a completely rotted out area here that's blocking water to get to the inside as well as around where the old drain used to be. And also rotted area down in the southeast corner of that root too. The canopy has rust and damage there. It looks like the main structure has lost where it was galvanized, so that's going to allow the screws or bolts to penetrate and for that undercarriage to fall. The main steel structure seems to be okay, but it's my recommendation that, you know, it'd be torn down rather than that area used for anything. It's deteriorated to the point where it's not being safe for any use, and it's also in such an unsafe condition that it should be torn down. Those are my two recommendations to the council.
Chuck, appreciate you taking a look at that and doing this work and sending it to us. Again, the council member that maybe had some questions or wanted to know more about that as of present tonight, so I don't know if that leads to any other questions from any other council member. I think it works pretty self-explanatory and I see what's going on. I guess if I'm Speedway, I'm thinking, well, maybe I can dump some money into this thing and fix it up. Do you think that's a possibility?
No. With my years of experience in construction, it would take more to repair that than it would to tear down and build a brand new building. You know, there's damage inside and underneath that we can't see, but with all the wetness and dampness, I don't believe there's any way that you can salvage that building.
Excellent.
Just a couple other things to think about that you may want to put into your proposal. There's taxes that are paid on that every year. They're paying about $2,400 a year, taxes from two lots combined, 15 for one and seven for the ones to the south. And one of the things I did find out from the assessor's office is if there's some way that the town were to get this property, you will have to pay taxes for at least one year. With the way that the laws have changed in the past, if government entity took it over, taxes stopped, but now you'll have to pay taxes for one year. Now, there is an appeals process that you could go in and ask for reassessment on that since the property is worst condition than it was. So we did some quick math on it, probably can get it down to about half of that, but you're going to have to put that in for at least one year.
Anybody have any questions for Chuck or anything about that? I'm going to tell you kind of where I think things are here with this issue in a minute.
Any questions for Chuck? It's what he says, self-explanatory. You can see them.
Well, if you remember, it was, it's been, I think, two meetings ago, the first meeting in January where the council said to me to send a letter to Speedway basically saying, we want a timeframe on when you're going to address these concerns with the building. Now, after this report, I don't know that it's so much adjusting the concerns with the building as it is just to have it torn down and removed. But all the same, the vote was for me to send the letter, and that hasn't changed. It would take another vote here from this council this evening to tell me not to send a letter and pursue a different course. I think it's still a good thing to do to send the letter and let them know, okay, this is where we see things are in regards to the building, in regards to the public nuisance, which is a little different than even what Chuck was asked to look at and consider, and the unsafe building ordinances and statutes that Chuck definitely did consider. So we kind of have two different means by which to go here, but I still think a letter to Speedway is A, what was voted for me to do, and now we have very specific information, which is what I was after. So I think that's appropriate for the reason that it's already been voted for me to do that. But B, to simply start at this point and issue an order sets in motion a whole chain of events in terms of then requiring a hearing. That's with our redevelopment commission, and there's timeframes involved with that. In other words, if we decide that we're not getting any response or any action out of Speedway, then that's something that we would recommend is, okay, we'll proceed under the unsafe building ordinance and try to have things remedied that way. But again, going to that step is something I would rather have the full council have a consideration on it and vote on that. But also, it, like I say, it sets in motion some very specific time requirements and some various specific steps that have to be followed, and quite frankly, I don't think we're prepared to do this evening. So I'm still of the recommendation that I send the original, or the letter as originally requested, but now I've got a little more information and a little more things to tell Speedway. And it'll be a little different in terms of coming in and fixing and repairing. It's simply going to be to have it removed in the model. And ask for a timeline, and if we don't get a response within a deadline, we can take other action.
I think we need to stay with the letter. I think go forward from there. Eric, continue.
Does anyone know if the tanks have been removed from there yet?
I think that we've been told that they haven't.
We've already done the hat and the arm.
One thing that's still is available to the town is that we have a brownfield grant that can come in and do a phase one and a phase two on that property, even if the tanks are removed, to see if there's any, needs any remediation for the soil or anything else around that.
You have letters from IDAM to the effect of the tanks have been removed, that's already provided to the council.
While I was talking about the brownfield grants, the other old building down the street, I think we are adding that to our list.
Which other old building are you referring to this?
The other old gas station or service. The south of the park, yes. And it is, it's at least as in bad a shape as this building for us, so.
Do you guys want to put that in the form of a vote in terms of having me send this letter now with this additional information? I'd be the best.
I make a motion that we go forward with Derek sending Speedway the letter.
With the additional?
With the additional information that he has received tonight.
Got a motion, a second to have Derek go ahead and go forward with sending the letter with the additional information that he's received on the building. Chuck, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Send the letter to the council as well before it gets mailed out. That way, if there's any strong objections or any real requests, we can kind of change them. Speak for peace, but other than that, we'll get it sent out. Just to keep you updated, I know that I still need to get a BNR services building, or BNR building and drill services contractor dreaming around. I forgot about it, but I don't have it done yet. And then the last thing I had was this resolution concerning the exchange of the real estate. It's a resolution that basically permits and authorizes the town to go ahead and close on that transaction. It's resolution 2017-2. I don't think it was in your packets, was it? Okay, and that's my fault if I didn't send it. There's no way it could have been in your packets, but there it is. And it's just a resolution, not an ordinance. Yes, and again, for the minutes and the record on this meeting as well, again, we had notice published of a public hearing which was held immediately prior to this meeting. That notice was published on January 20, 2017. We have the publisher's claim back from the pilot.
I move to pass resolution 2017-2.
Got a motion, a second to pass resolution 2017-2. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. 2017-2 was for the ITAMCO land slot. I think that's all I had.
I move that we accept the attorney's report.
Got a motion, a second to accept the attorney's report. All in favor say aye. Aye. Next up's EMS building. Well, they tore the walls off and, want to talk about it?
I will. Been working with Jamie and the guys from, Jamie Lynn's from the guys in town over there. I think we've come to the conclusion, I know what the problem has been over time. We're looking to get some quotes in on fixing and repairing that. These are the same problems that have been there for many years. The building is solid and sound, and I think with the repairs that need to be done and the way that's going to be done would be putting it back into good shape. I know there's been a discussion about tearing the building down and starting over, and I understand that frustration because you've put money in it over the years to fix problems, but problems somehow got overlooked and the source wasn't found, but I think we know what it is and know how to fix it. So if anybody has any questions later on, I think Jamie's trying to get some ballpark quotes so that next month he can be in and say, this might be the range that we're asked to fix what it is.
Thank you, Chuck. Argus Youth League. Letter from Peter Hall. I was wondering if it would be possible for the Argus Youth League to hold our registration days at the BNR building on Saturday, February 25th and Saturday, March 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Please let me know if this is something that can be worked out. We have not printed our registration forms yet, but would like to get that done very shortly. Thank you. So they already use it during the week? What days they use it?
They don't have that with me.
Okay.
They only use it like once, maybe once or twice a month, I think, but...
For Tuesday?
Yeah. The only problem I have is if somebody wants to rent it, then it's a loss of revenue on a Saturday, but that's up to you guys. I don't have a problem with them using it right now. Those gates are both open.
So it only comes once a year?
I'm not against it.
No, I'm not either. I'm just saying it only comes once a year.
If it's not spoken for in a position, it's available, I say yes. It's 10 to 1 almost on Saturdays.
Yeah.
You still might be able to rent it out if somebody wanted it later in the afternoon party, you know?
Hope that it'll be all filled safe. Motion, a second.
I make a motion to allow the Argus Youth League on February 25th and Saturday, March 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for their registration.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to allow the Argus Youth League to use the BNR building on Saturday, February 25th and Saturday, March 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. All in favor say aye. I will, I'm going to say as long as, well, you said it's not rented out, so we're making a motion, so. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Four openings. Same thing, Marshall County Tourism, Planning Commission, Redevelopment, and BZA. Submit a letter to Lisa. Any other whole business?
New business. Whole business. I didn't see you. That's all right. I'm kind of in business.
Sitting back there.
Pardon?
Sitting back there.
A couple things. Just wanted to brief the council on some important dates relative to the comp plan as processes we near completion of that. I expect that a public notice will be issued on the 3rd, which is this Friday. We'll coordinate that because a public notices begins the 30-day public input process, it will. As by state statutes, they require that the public be able to comment on that. There is a meeting on the 13th, which will be held at the Art Center, where the Comp Plan Steering Committee will conduct a, this is your comp plan open to the general public for comments. There's quite a bit of activity to track. There's a remark to that particular meeting, and I forget the time. Is that 6:30? It's not on my calendar right now. 6:30? Yes. So, and then we will close the public comment period on the 3rd of March. And hopefully, conduct a planning, plant commission meeting on the 13th, so the plan can be adopted at a given period of time, so plant commission can conduct their business and get up to speed with the comp plan itself. State statute requires that the plant commission adopt the comp plan. And we end up on the 15th century, this is the target right now, where you will have the comp plan in front of you, so you can adopt the comp plan. So those are the dates that we're working towards. There may be some adjustments. There are several public notices in that, 10 days for public, public notice for the plant commission, 10 days for town council as well. So NACOB will be coordinating a lot of those dates for Lisa, getting these notices out, not only of whatever you post those, but also in the papers. So I think we've got our bases covered. It's been a good process. We've been a lot of good work, and we're coming down to the wire. The steering committee reviewed the draft copy of the plan, and I think we're comfortable with what's included. But they, the steering committee will be conducting the public forum on the 13th themselves. We'll be there in support if there's some managers or questions that are asked, and they need some technical advice or responses to those. So really don't need to take any action on that tonight. It's more of information. The other item that I'd like to bring up to the council, you had me explore some fact binding, not wanting the Speedway. I'm glad to see that you're moving that particular item forward, but also relative to housing options for the town itself. And I think that by the 13th, I'll be in a position to make some recommendations. I'd like to have an executive committee beforehand, so I can do some briefing, and it would be take that, take some of those items at that particular time to the council later on that evening, but I'd like authorization to proceed and get to appraisals on some property that you had me looking at. Something similar to, maybe the Speedway due diligence.
Now you're saying you want an executive session of the next meeting or for the next meeting?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth's a Monday, isn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteenth. Yeah, you're right. Maybe the same day as council.
Right.
And my goal there, to add on to Derek's comments, is to have the appraisals at that meeting so we can make decisions at council.
So you want us to move on, go ahead with the appraisal decision?
I make a motion, we go ahead and let Jerry move on with the appraisals. Second.
Got a motion, a second to allow Jerry to move and continue with the two appraisals on the property that we've been looking at. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Not mine. I have premature my opinion.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business?
I don't know if this is old or new. We have the visitor's guide, and I know it's, there's varying opinions out there, but the one thing we've all talked about, this town needs marketing. We have to market ourselves. And so I did commit to a page in here, which is eight hundred dollars, so if the town wants to approve it, if not, I'll check myself. So that's up to this town.
I got approval from the school board to go in a third, and I got, I haven't gotten approval from the town council for their third, but the park board said no.
I don't see why we have to go thirds even, we're all one community.
Oh, I'm, that's how we did it last year, so that's the way I was told to pursue it, so.
Let's just pay for it. We will, I say we just pay for it. I'd like to make a motion that the council just.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Argus Community Development Corporation.
Which is for the festival. I think you all got the email I sent you. Just like last year, we're back to ask for part of our funding. I tried to explain what we do with your money, fireworks, we put fish in your pond, and you pay for our insurance policy. The rest of the funding, we actually get from donations, so we've got about a twenty-two thousand dollar budget, so the ten thousand requests that we've been getting covers about forty-five percent of that, so we would hope that you continue that, that you have in years past. Obviously, our ending goal in all this is to become self-funded, we just are going to have to have some time. And we're very pleased with what did occur last year, we're already adding to that, so we're still going to keep it just the day and a half, it's going to be June twenty-third and twenty-fourth, so we'll end it on the twenty-fourth with the fireworks, still on musical acts, and kids events during the day, food booths.
We had, we've added some things that obviously, the park has added some features that are going to bring more things as well. We'll have the sandpit volleyball. Our anticipation is to have the, or anticipate adding the horseshoe pits done, so I mean, a couple of different things, we want to add more sporting events this year, as well as we did meet, and there is going to be, I believe, the, well, John, the good John Vanderwill. But anyway, John G. Vanderwill, he's actually put together and is spearheading a run that day, they're going to have a five K.
Six dollars.
For dollars, six dollars, so I mean, they are going to put a run together. There's going to, we've got a barbecue cook-off that's going to happen, it's going to be a backyard barbecue cook-off, so people can bring their own cookers and stuff, we've got that. There's going to be a lot of different things this year, first year, a lot of learning experiences, some things we're going to do differently, and some things we're not going to do that we did last year, so I mean, hopefully, as Mark said, the plan is as we go on that we are self-sufficient, self-sufficient, we don't need to come and ask for as much money. But the majority of the money went, I mean, I heard personally, a million comments are exaggeration, but a ton of comments about fireworks, nobody expected it to be what it was. So I mean, I think that's actually going to change for this year, people, it's out there, they know it's going to be an awesome fireworks show for what we have, and I think, well, we expected a lot more people than we had last year.
And for what we pay him, we can't complain.
No, he's local, he's out here in town, so I mean, he fits us a heck of a deal, we get, we get a, we get an over, over probably twelve thousand dollar show for about half that, so he treats us very well.
You guys did a great job last year.
Thanks, and I mean, there was more than just, just us, there was a lot, that's the awesome thing, I mean, we get a lot of people involved, you know, Mark Thompson's there, you know, different people in the community that are doing things, and it was a good time, we had a lot of fun. And by me, anybody that wants to help, we always help. It was a good time, I mean, it's awesome. We're going to do a little bit different with rides and kid stuff this year, so it should be, it'll be a lot, a lot better than I wanted it to be.
I move that we donate the ten thousand. I second.
Got a motion, a second to donate the ten thousand to the Argus Community Development Corporation for the festival, the summer festival. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Any other new business?
Well, for the last meeting, I had suggested we give reports on what we do, and I have a report until I get them in January. Okay, I participated in three steering committee meetings on the third, fifth, and twelfth. I met with Jim and Jamie discussing utility issues, I am their utility liaison on the thirteenth, sixteenth, and twenty-third. I also met with Jim, Jamie, and with Unwon Associates on the water and wastewater studies on the seventeenth. I attended the park board meeting, for which I'm liaison, on the nineteenth. On the twenty-fourth, I met with Jennifer Vanderburg from Oak Grove. We had a very good meeting. I attended the impum dinner at Cristos, and between the fifth and the thirty-first, I had numerous communications with Chuck on setting up the Speedway inspection and getting that completed. And obviously, this does not include the council meetings, the executive session, the work session on rate studies, the cemetery meeting, and all the prepping research that goes into these meetings, or the phone calls and communications related to this. So that's what I did for the town during January. I think we need to be accountable to the people, they need to know that we are working for them.
I had surgery this month, so I was kind of down and out, but I took pictures of the Speedway, I don't have a formal report, sorry. I took pictures over the Speedway and sent them to all the council members, and I went and looked at the EMS building, and, or Jamie, looked at all of the council meetings, I didn't go to the steering committee meeting because it was right after surgery. That's what I did.
I was unprepared that we were doing this now because I missed last meeting, so I can assure you, you will have my report every meeting at that time.
Any other things?
I would, on behalf of the park department and park board, Suzanne, she is, she does go, even before she was our liaison, she did attend the meetings, but we are in the process of doing some upgrades at the memorial park. We want to do some, some different things in there, kind of spruce it up, remove some of the old stuff. And we have asked, whether it's a community member or a board member or whatever, if you have any suggestions or something you would like to see in that park, to at least let us know. It's not, you know, the five of us that sit up, there are four of us, it's in most of the time, but the four of us that sit up, there are five of us, that it's not our park, it's everybody's park, and we want, you know, what's important to you guys. I mean, we do the best we can sometimes, and sometimes we'll do something and hear, well, we didn't really like to have, we probably had this, but nobody ever told us, so if you do get anybody that says they want something, call me, contact me, whatever, or relay it back to me, however you like, because we do want to do some, some different things, but we're looking for input from the community, what they want, it's their property, so.
Dogwood trees.
I've heard from Bear Gardens, all of that stuff.
Actually, I've had a lot of people order me on a Bear Garden.
Are you guys planning on replacing the equipment?
Some of it, yes, because a lot of it's outdated and it's unsafe. We have removed some pieces, obviously, that were unsafe, we just, we didn't replace those, but that's the thing, we are actually, I believe Joe had talked at the last meeting, we are going to put a half-court basketball down there, the school had donated to us some brand new basketball holes that they had, so they're nice ones, so we're going to actually try to utilize those, put a half-court down there, because we think, even though the church has one there, I mean, it gets used a lot, we think that's a good, good one there, it's a little bit nicer, it's, there's a lot of need for things on the south end of town, too, it isn't, it isn't just that part, it's just, and the pond as well, I mean, they're all, it's all, yeah, all three together, so I mean, whatever we can do to improve, that's what, that's what we're looking for, we're looking for ways to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Claims ninety-four through one forty-eight.
The total docket for February second, twenty sixteen is two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and eighty-seven cents. The top five claims are as followed. Number one is impa for a hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-one cents. Number two is anthem at thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars and fifty-eight cents. Number three is payroll number two at twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Republic services at twelve thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents, and Marshall County Sheriff for our dispatch fees of eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, for a total of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents, and that represents eighty-five percent of the total docket.
Listen, am I correct the dispatch fees? That's an annual fee?
Yes.
He said it'd be free.
And then I just let the anthem this for two months. And then I'm going to. Hey, I also look, so I make a motion to accept claim docket for February second, twenty seventeen.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to accept claim docket ninety-four, the claims ninety-four through one forty-eight for February second, two thousand seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Do you have anything else?
I make a motion.
Your wife's been quiet for a minute.
You have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.